Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome in to the Brevard County School Board Candidate Forum. Brought to you by Space Coast Daily and the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, as we embark on an essential journey of discussing our future of education in this community, I'm Zach Clark alongside Vanessa Skipper of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Together, we're going to be guiding tonight's conversation. And we're honored to have each one of the candidates here tonight for District Four. And tonight, we're going to be talking about their visions and how they see the school board and how they see education going forward together in this community. And tonight, we're going to have a great conversation here today. And I'm thankful for all the candidates for showing up here today. And thank you for the audience for having a great attendance out here tonight at the Space Coast Association of Realtors Building.
Absolutely, and I just want to do a quick reminder. You guys were fantastic with our audience decorum for the District Three Candidate Forum. And so, we're just asking for the same bipartisan example to be set for this one as well. So, please refrain from talking at your table. Again, I know that it might feel like it's a quiet conversation. It's not, can be distracting for our audience at home. It can be distracting for our candidates onstage. Also, if you haven't silenced your cellphones, please take the time to do it. And please be respectful to the candidates, be respectful to the fellow attendees. And if there are any shenanigans, we are going to ask you to leave. So, I don't think that's going to be an issue because you guys were already phenomenal the first time around, so looking forward to another great... Well, I mean, we were almost there, we were almost there. It's all right, it's all right, take two, take two. But again, let's set a great bipartisan example for our students, our teachers, our fellow citizens, and everyone that cares so much about Brevard Public Schools.
We are also live streaming here tonight on spacecoastdaily.com across Facebook and YouTube. So, if you want to be able to tune into this later, or if you're tuning in right now, welcome in. We are going to have a great conversation here. And if you want to be able to leave a comment, we want the community to become engaged in this. If there's something that you want to weigh in on, go ahead and leave a comment, either on YouTube or on Facebook, and have a conversation. This is a very important topic regarding education in our community. And we want to make sure everybody has a voice to be able to make their voice heard. So, let's get started with some of the rules that we have here tonight. Each candidate is going to be allotted two minutes to respond to each question. For questions two through five, we're going to give an additional minute of response time will be allotted, if needed, and available to that candidate. If you go over on your time, the time will simply be subtracted from your next response window. A time reminder will be provided 15 seconds before your time ends, so that you have the ability to be able to wrap up your statements in a timely manner. So, we're going to get started. We're going to start with each candidate that's going to introduce themselves. And each candidate is going to provide why you're running, what uniquely qualifies you to be suited for this position, and what you believe the expectations of an elected school board member should be. We're going to start on the very end, and we'll start with Crystal.
Good evening, Brevard County. It is so nice to be here this evening, and I do see a lot of familiar faces, so that's wonderful. My name is Crystal Casey. I am running for District Four School Board because I have witnessed the accomplishments and seen some of the failures of District Four leadership in the last few years, which has made me very concerned as a mother of two teenage boys that attend Vera High School, whom I love dearly. I've also advocated for other parents' children at school board meetings when they have been too afraid to speak up and speak out about things that have happened to their children. I am a fierce advocate for children, and I will be if I am elected to District Four School Board. I do have experience with safety, security, as I am an 18-year flight attendant. I am retired, but I would love to use my communication skills to better foster of an environment of inclusiveness, collaboration, and above all, safety and security within our school district. Once again, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. I welcome your questions, and I want to be the kind of candidate that is approachable, that students, staff, parents can come to me. I will listen, and I will respond. Thank you.
Max?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Max Madel. What qualifies me as a candidate is I am currently a student at Vera High School. I have been in Brevard Public Schools since kindergarten, so the past 13 years. I come from a mother who is an educator. She's been teaching for 27 years now. So, a little bit why I'm running is I'd like to provide the student perspective onto the board. That's something Brevard County has never seen before. And I think it would be really great to diversify the viewpoints on the board with a mixture of former teachers, business owners, community members, and now a student. So, that's why I'm running.
Matt?
Hello, thank you. My name's Matt Susan, and I'm your current school board member for District Four. I'm also a proud husband and father of five children, two of which are currently in BPS and two of which are well on their way. Though, one of the things that makes me very unique to be qualified for this position is not only what I'm about to read you, which is all of the things that I've done over the last 20 years as a part of an educator and other things inside our school district, but it's how you do that. It's not just being an educator that I was for nine years. It's also being on the Insurance Advisory Committee and driving down the cost of healthcare so that you can provide more for the benefits for the other side. It's also knowing how to be a coach and win. As a countywide Coach of the Year for the county, I took a wrestling team undefeated. You don't do that by just being a coach. You also, I sat down and I was also a part of the many sponsored clubs. We talk about mental health later on. One of the things is to provide options for many of the children so that they have an opportunity. As a board member, I was on the State Board of Directors for the Florida School Board Association. I was also the advocacy chairman for the entire state of Florida as a board member. That's in charge of legislation and all other items for all other school boards in the state. I'm also a business owner currently, and I have been for the past four years. I'm appreciative of everything that you have, everything that you've given me over the last seven years as your current board member. But I wanted you, as you go through this conversation, to understand that one of the things that uniquely qualifies me to be the board member tonight is the fact that the way that you lead and the way that you fight for your experience is how it determines you to be different from others. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks to BFT and Space Coast Daily for having us. I'm Dr. Ebeneeze Taylor, but I go by Ava. The best way for me to tell you my why is to tell you how I got here. We're a military family. I've been in the Navy for the last 17 and a half years. So, for me, why I'm here, sometimes as sailor, you don't get a chance to choose your duty stations, but I had a choice between Texas or Space Coast. And I decided to choose Space Coast because my family is about a couple hours away. This has been the closest I've ever lived to them since I've joined. And we're also a divorced family. So, for me, what that looks like is when I deploy, my son goes to live with my ex-husband in another state. And when I'm on shore duty, like I am now, he lives with me. So, I chose this for stability for my son because he's never been able to stay at a school and finish the whole elementary, finish middle school. So, I wanted him to have that structure for high school. But unfortunately, I had to change schools for him again due to him being the victim in the hazing incident that happened at Vera High School. So, during that time, I was going to school board meetings, going to BIPOC meetings and things of that nature, but I wasn't consistent. But after that, that lit a fire. And what it lit a fire in doing was making sure that, hey, I need to be active and actually go and do these things that I say I wanted to do. I wanted to be a mentor, so I actually went and did it and became a mentor. And then, I started going consistently to the school board meetings, at least in the afternoon ones, because I couldn't make the daytime ones. And I'm just a person of action. I'm not just going to sit here and complain. I want to do something about it. And that's why I chose to run for Brevard School Board, District Four. What uniquely qualifies me is that I bring a unique perspective from my experience in the military. I've been able to work with people from a very diverse background all over the world. And we unite to finish and we unite to accomplish the mission.
All right, thank you very much. And we are actually going to start with you for the next question. We'll go back down the row. Like many districts in the state of Florida, Brevard Public Schools is facing a severe teacher and support staff shortage. Florida ranks 50th in average teacher pay, and Brevard's teachers are being paid less than the state average. Where will you find the money to address the disparity?
Well, I guess that's the billion-dollar question. This budget is complex, I'm not going to lie. I don't have a billion dollars in my bank account. Just if you were wondering, I don't. However, I think that as a school board member, you have to be able to look at the data. Where can you pull money from? How is it going to affect certain different things? And you've got to make hard decisions. Yes, is that talking to the CFO, talking to other school board district, school district people and personnel? But the reality is you've got to make tough choices because, as you noted, Brevard, we're under the average teacher pay by like over 2K. And if you're going to support the students, you've got to support the teachers. Now, trying to find that, that's hard. And I'm just looking at those budget, the negotiations for the BFT. I was like, wow, they came up with 12.7, and they said they came back with 1%. And that was hard to find. So, what do you do when the state is not fully funding our public schools? We put in a situation where it's almost like a lose-lose, where our teachers are not able to make a living wage. And I don't know about y'all, but when I go to the grocery store, I'm looking like, what did I get? What's going on here? So, I think teachers are doing the same things. So, I think that there's no perfect answer. And I don't think it's a magic solution to this. But I will do my best to work hard to trying to find the money to make sure our teachers get paid what they deserve.
Thank you. So, when you're talking about locating money, there's multiple ways to do it. There's one, going and finding the money. So, one of the things that we're going to bring forward this year for the first time in Brevard County history is zero-based budgeting. That's where the department has to come forward and lay out everything that they're going to spend the money on for the first time. So, that means that any of the extra money that falls to the bottom line in March that ends up being spent and rolled over will be caught. That's the first thing. The second thing that we have a problem with here in Brevard, which not many people talk about, is that we have a lot of federal land. And we receive a small portion of money reflective to us having federal land in the offsets of the cost. So, right now, if you go to any of the other school districts in the state of Florida, many of them don't have a massive amount of federal land that doesn't receive taxes. Because we don't receive taxes from that, our basis for giving the money to the teachers is not there. So, there's an advocacy that I will do this year to increase what's known as the federal land tax piece that allows us to get money offsetting because we lose that. Just so you know, Kennedy Space Center, Patrick Air Force Base, and other places around here don't pay any taxes. And we should be offset that so that we can then pass that on to our staff. The other piece is, is that we used to do this. This year, I'm going to advocate for this. We're going to do a 10% budget cut. Not because we're going to do it, but because we only do it when it's time to have a budget cut. If you ask to have a budget cut, then you can find the areas that staff is willing to take a look at in order to reduce cost. The other component is, is to control the cost of insurance. Today, right before I came here, we were looking at a 16% increase to our members and their insurance. So, it doesn't matter how much you throw at a raise if you've got to pay for it on the other end. So, I was battling inside that committee today to bring forward different options so that you could lower the cost of healthcare. There's multiple different ways to attack this. And by saying that you're going to attack just by looking at the budget or going here or there, those are great. But it takes a whole lot more to take a look at rather than just, we're going to cut the budget, or we're going to go do this. It's multifaceted. It's taking in the revenue from the state and advocating up at the state level. It's taking in cutting your budget or looking at the areas that you can cut. It's also taking a look at how you can control costs like insurance and other things. Thank you.
Go ahead, Max.
So, teacher pay is a complex issue. Nobody disagrees with that, at least you shouldn't. And it's no surprise that our teachers are underpaid in Brevard County. As was said, our average is 2,000 less than the state. So, not only do they work the seven and a half hour long day, they bring all of their work home. Well, not all of it, but assignments they need to grade, tests they need to grade. They even have to make lesson plans at home. So, realistically, their day is longer than the seven and a half hours. One way that I would impose, like Matt said as well, a teacher raise is budget cuts. We need to find what is being overfunded in our budget currently, and we need to focus on the necessities instead. So, by cutting down what's overfunded and funding the necessities such as teacher pay, such as resources for students, things that our district really needs to succeed, we can make that happen together. Thanks.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, our teachers are the heart and soul of our public school system. And I'd like to reference Mr. Calucci's speech last night at the school board meeting, if I could, if that's okay with you, sir. As I watched Mr. Calucci speak, I realized that he was exactly right. 1% raise for our teachers is insulting, is absolutely ridiculous. We can do better. And I know that my fellow candidates are talking about different ways to increase teacher pay. I propose a reallocation of money looking at a fiscally responsible way to reallocate from, say, athletics, to direct that money where it belongs, to our teachers' pockets. I'd also like to add that in addition to pay, we're also seeing an increase, according to Mr. Calucci, of our teachers receiving letters in their files as opposed to admin receiving just a verbal warning. We need to support our teachers first and foremost. And I do not believe that there should be a disparity between admin receiving a verbal warning for the same offense versus a teacher receiving a letter in their file. So, I propose a reallocation of money where it belongs. This would be a first priority for me. If I were elected to District Four, I would definitely be supportive of teacher staff and support staff. In addition to that, I would say that mental health resources will help to curb a lot of the violence that we are seeing with the discipline numbers in Brevard Public Schools. We can get into more discipline functions later. But with regard to teacher pay, I believe that Mr. Calucci hit the nail on the head there with his speech last night. And I really appreciate your participation in the school board meeting, sir. Thank you very much.
And before we go on to our next question, just for the audience at home and the teachers in the room, it is an eight-hour contract. But you're right, Mr. Madel, we work way longer than those eight hours. But you know somebody's going to latch on to that talking point. So, eight hours, but way more than eight hours. Thank you to all the candidates for their responses on that question.
Great answers, guys. We're going to move on to the next one. We're going to talk about school security and mental health. And after the tragedy of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School in 2018, 17 students and school staff members were murdered. Legislation was passed in to make Florida schools more secure, and a massive initiative to strengthen BPS security and address mental health needs of students was implemented. What are your thoughts on the progress in the area of school security and addressing the mental health needs of our students? Specifically, to your role as a school board member, how would you address these areas? I'll start with Crystal. Down there.
Thank you very much for the question. This is definitely priority. I myself, as a parent, have experienced the failure of Brevard Public Schools with regard to school safety, as my son's life was threatened at Vera High School last year. As a school board member, I feel that it is imperative to respond to parents who are frightened about the safety of their children at school. In my instance, my emails were not returned, Mr. Susan.
We are not going to be naming candidates in it. That's part of the decorum, so please keep your answers not naming your opponents. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, my apologies. I will refrain. Being a flight attendant for 18 years, I will say that there are things that I can't share with you regarding safety and security measures about that particular profession. But what I can tell you is I take it extremely seriously. Every flight, every day, every time I stepped on an aircraft, I promise you, my first priority was the safety of my guests or my passengers. I didn't treat anybody differently just because they dressed differently or, you know, they came from a different background, they had a different culture. I wanted to welcome them as my guests. And I would tell you that if a parent came to me and they were afraid for their child's safety, I would listen to them. We would coordinate with district security. We would implement a safety plan for that student. We would do everything that we could do to ensure that that student could continue their education in a safe manner. I can tell you from my own personal experience that there's a lot of implementation of safety features that I would promote. And there's definitely room in the school budget to do this. So, my feeling on this matter is that safety is of utmost importance. Our law enforcement, our school resource officers, and our district security do a phenomenal job at keeping our threats at bay. But there is so much more that we can do to protect our children. And I believe that if I am elected your school board member, I am going to do everything in my power as a flight attendant, history, and a parent who has experienced some failures at BPS to do better for the security and safety of our children. Thank you.
Max?
When it comes to school safety, Brevard County is doing, I'd say, a decent job. But number one, we need to make sure that our faculty and staff are abiding by the safety policies. I stress this all the time. Most of the time when an intruder enters a campus is because a door or a gate was left open. We need to start taking accountability for this. And when this happens, excuse me, we need to ensure that all entrances onto a campus are closed during the school day. And the only way somebody would be able to get in is through being buzzed in through their front office and getting a yellow sticker. When it comes to the mental health, there is no doubt there is a current mental health crisis going on nationwide. According to the Centers for Disease Control, 40% of our students right now are stressed out and dealing with mental health issues. I hear so many times, every single day, when I walk the halls of Vera High School, different phrases that students say that should require immediate mental health attention. Our shortage of social workers has only made this problem worse. Currently, we're not paying a competitive salary for the position, and a lot of our schools right now are looking for social workers. But social workers can go off and work for a private company and make a lot more money. So, we need to pay social workers a competitive wage just to help out our students. But not only our students, our teachers and staff are struggling as well. Whether it be the stress from a normal school day or any other external life obligations they have going on, they need support. And if we're not supporting them, they're not going to be there for us. And that is one of the reasons we are currently having a teacher retention issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Many of you are aware in 2000, when Marjorie Stoneman Douglas occurred and the massive amount of security that we put into our schools in order to make our students safe. We went to single-point entry in every school. Right now, if there's a gate open or a door open, the Office of Safe Schools is alerted, and there's an issue where it comes down where the administrator and the teacher are put on to a disciplinary process. That is the level that we are at to keep the doors locked. We also brought in 4,000-plus cameras. We also brought in security specialists to the schools that didn't have SROs. Many people didn't know. But our elementary schools in two major municipalities didn't even have an armed response at the school in the event that something happened. So, we had to move quickly to create a security specialist piece that goes into that. We also brought on therapy dogs for the mental health. We also went to canine units to identify any of the drugs and other things that are inside the classroom. And then, we started many of the supports for the students for the mental health. Now, I will tell you, security is solid, but it could be improved. We all know that. Moving to mental health, it's been indicated already by other candidates, 100% have to pay a living wage to our social workers, our mental health counselors, and others that are related to that field. Now, how do you do that? Because what happens is when you go in to negotiate, you have to identify certain people for raises and other people not. So, what I would do is, is currently, in some of the areas that you have teachers, classroom teachers that are needed for science or other positions, you take those and you give them an opportunity with a higher stipend or a higher raise. We have tried to match a living standard for mental health counselors and others, and we should try to do it again. The problem is, is that we don't have enough of them. And where we fail is going to recruit them to come to this county. So, one is the pay, but two is also recruiting them to come to the county. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, is that many of the things that go on as far as mental health is not only providing those stipend, but then also providing a system to get the students the right care. We've had a long process of identifying students with needs that haven't been able to get those needs, and TSS processes and others. Our current system, we moved all of the people from ESF that are in charge of the exceptional student programs, and we're putting them into the schools. And we're reducing the amount of time that it takes to identify each one of those issues that you have. There's a lot of components to mental health. There's one, the pay. Two, taking care of the teachers inside of the classroom through having programs like that. And then, three, giving them the respect that they need through a strong discipline process. Thank you.
Ava?
Yes, as been stated, BPS is doing well when it comes to the physical security of our schools. I think they have a good working relationship with the sheriff's office and the police departments. And in saying that, I know there's a lot of discussion about expanding that guardian program and arming support staff. I am a supporter of the Second Amendment fully. I just don't believe that support staff should be armed. First of all, they don't get paid enough to do the jobs that they're doing. And then, let alone to add this element when we're talking about mental health, which I'll get to, because what are you going to do? You have to pull that trigger. Somebody who's trained in using weapons, guns, it's a different thing. And especially a different thing when you have to pull the trigger, you pull the trigger erroneously, and you make that mistake. So, what about the liabilities there? So, I just believe that the physical security of our schools and the people that need to be armed is better served for law enforcement. Now, we're talking about mental health. For me, my background and educational experience, I got a bachelor's in psychology, a master's in counseling, a PhD in general psychology. Randomly, I'm an electrician in the military side. I got a trade. So, I'm kind of all over the place. But mental health is very important, not only for the students. It's important for the teachers. I mean, there's a lot of talk about money. And money seems to be the recurring theme around here, not having enough. We can't recruit and get social workers because there's a lot of vacancies. When I talk to teachers and I talk to principals, they're saying, we losing our social worker, we losing our guidance counselor. They having to pull those duties to be the guidance counselor. And it's almost just like me being a senior leader in the Navy. You've got to be somebody's mama, you've got to be the counselor, you've got to be a lot of things. And especially when you're teachers and the people that work in these schools, I know, it's not about the pay. They're there because they want to be there and they want our children to be successful. But when you add in all of these things, I mean, we are at a, it's almost like a ticking time bomb. Like, we're waiting for something to happen, and we really don't have... We keep talking about all these things, but what are the actual solutions? And what are we really going to do? And a lot of it is really with that budget. So, we'll see what happens. And a lot of it is really with that budget, so we'll see what happens. And hopefully, we can, there's money in the budget to hire these individuals, but where are they located? But one thing I did see was that there was a program with Florida Tech with their SIDE students that they're going to assist in trying to bridge that gap and working with some students.
All right. Thank you very much. Since 2020, BPS has seen a significant drop in student enrollment with parents choosing alternative options outside BPS to educate their children. As a board member, do you feel that it is your role to attract these families back to BPS? If so, what would that look like for you? Dr. Taylor, we'll start with you.
Well, we in an age of competition, and I talked to a lot of parents, and some of them just didn't come back after COVID. And some of the things that they cited was they just were not confident in what the board was doing. They lost trust. And how do you get people back? You got to earn their trust. And you're definitely not going to earn the trust with some of the decorum and some of the things and the way that people are treated, just not being treated with dignity and respect by some board members, just to the community. So there's no way for you to build trust when, if you can't talk to me and treat me the way that I want to be treated, and vice versa. We don't have to agree politically because that shouldn't have anything to do with what's going on in the school board anyway. But I should be able to have a conversation with anybody, no matter what side of the political aisle that you're on. So I think that's a way to build trust. Let's get some dignity and respect on the dais. Just simple stuff. I don't think a lot of the things that we talk about, like, is that hard. Do you have a budget? Okay. But just treating people right, that's simple. And I think if we can display that from the top down, maybe people will come back.
Thank you. Mr. Susan?
Thank you. Many of the, there's a multifaceted reason why parents don't come to BPS or that they stayed home over. Though one of the rises, the key rises is going to be your homeschool students. And many of the issues that the homeschool students have found is a curriculum that is open for them, that they don't have to be tightened up and they have to be inside the walls of a classroom. They also have the freedom of doing different things throughout the day. So the idea that we have this old idea that we're going to bring those students back to the classroom for a full day is going to be part of it. But where we really are starting to win is to attract those homeschool students to come back for a part of the day. So let me give you an example. We just moved with many of the, with a two-star general and others in an organization called ECAC that we put together to try to attract many of the homeschool students back to our schools for various programs. Homeschool students now can come back and they can be in career and technical programs. They can be in ROTC. So many of them may have religious beliefs that keeps them out. They may have beliefs over different issues. But if we can identify what those issues are and provide an avenue for them to come into our schools, we win. We also should beef up, which is one of the hardest parts, is our Brevard Virtual School. Our virtual school could be stronger and attract many of those individuals that are at the Florida Virtual School. If we offer more programs there, we will attract more students to it. Now, many people don't know, but you have about eight thousand-plus dollars that comes to the district per parent, per student. But if they come full-time to our schools, but if they hit our Brevard Schools, Brevard Virtual, it's about five thousand-plus. So what happens is, is we don't beef up that, we lose revenue to the virtual school, which, when you look at the offset of costs, it's definitely a positive for our school district if we're able to attract them into there. Those are two of the issues that you have. The other part of it is, is that we have done a poor job inside of our schools as far as allowing the parents to come into the schools to have lunch with their childrens and stuff like that. And that's not because of us. That's because of the state rules and regulations that have held us in the security coming down from the state. So meaning, many times before, many of your parents were able to come to the school, and they could have lunch with their child, they could do different things. Now, because of the way that the laws are written, we're not allowed to allow them to be by themselves with their children, which stinks. So what I would like to do is advocate this year to allow, to go back to the way that we were before because many of the parents don't want to be part of the schools because they don't have that connection to the schools like they used to. There's a wide variety of issues that come up when we go to do those. The other piece is a competitive curriculum. I will tell you right now, being homeschooled is great, but you don't have the opportunities that you have inside of our BPS schools. And that needs to be advertised more, and that's another way to do it. We have some of the most amazing robotics programs and other things that are funded through our school districts that are not taken advantage of by many of these homeschool students, and they find there's a lack there as they get older. So I think that those are some of the areas that we can go attract and start bringing some of those students in. Thank you.
Mr. Maitland?
So when it comes to homeschool students, in my opinion, if that is the option that a parent feels best for their child and the child agrees, then that's completely their choice. Now, when it comes to bringing in a competition between home education and Brevard Public Schools, I one hundred percent believe that we need a competitive curriculum. We need the best of the best. We need the best teachers. We need the best support staff. We need everything top of the line that we could possibly get. One thing that we do see a lot is a lot of homeschooled students coming in to Brevard Public Schools to participate in extracurricular activities, whether it be sports or clubs, anything that really interests them. This is amazing, and without it, we would lose the well-roundedness of all of the students in our community. That's all I got.
I was excited to hear more. When it comes to homeschooling, I can understand why parents choose this or children choose that because there may be many reasons why that is a better fit for them. Lately, I've talked to some ESE teachers, and there has been some clustering going on with ESE students. Gifted students, perhaps the 504 isn't being honored. Perhaps the school or administration is not hearing the parents' plea to go over that 504, to provide for that child, to provide the mental health resources for that child to succeed. It is entirely possible that we can meet the need of our ESE students so that they are not relegated to homeschooling because a lot of these kids need the socialization. Trust me. Working on aircraft, it's all about being social. Learning how to reach that individual is key. And so I believe there's many different factors. I've heard a lot of really good answers about this from Max, and also from Ava by May.
Okay, we're not naming candidates again. I really don't want to have to stop the debate and ask people to leave, so please don't name candidates.
I do apologize. That was a compliment. I do agree-
If you're complimenting, please do not name candidates.
Yes, ma'am. My apologies once again. I do believe that the respect is necessary between the admin and the parent. And I've noticed that the communication sometimes is lax there. Where maybe the parent is reaching out and they are really trying to find a solution for their child. They're really trying to make it work with the resources that are available. And they do try to communicate, but maybe they're ignored. So I do believe that communication is key, and it just so happens that that is my strong suit. I love to communicate. I love to work out problems. I like to talk one-on-one. I will talk to any parent that would come to me and say, "Look, my child's 504 is not being honored, and now that ESE gifted student wants to be at home," when in fact, they should be at school because they're a social individual, and that would make them a more well-rounded student. So to wrap this up, since I have fifteen seconds, I'd like to say that this is an area where I feel that my communication skills would definitely assist parents to decide to give us another try. Thank you.
As a board member, you will be responsible for handling a billion-dollar budget. As a candidate, do you believe that there are areas of the budget that you find problematic? And if so, how could the funds be best used? We'll start with Crystal.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I believe everything is wrong with the budget. Where do I start? I believe that we should start with a forensic audit and not by RSM. We've already had some trouble out of them. For those of you that follow the so-called audit that recently occurred last year, there are deficiencies here, and we pass the millage. We don't know where all of this money is being spent. I would like to find out. I would like to get down into the nitty-gritty of it and find out why our teachers are being paid a one percent raise, which is abysmal. I'd like to find out why we can't have a social worker in every school to be there for our kids. So when they are bullied, they have a professional to talk to and they can work through it. I want to know, why is it that we cannot afford a water purification system for those students, beachside, Satellite Beach, where we know the water is a real problem with contamination? This is an area where federal grants are available. So if you're talking about budget and funding, we can find the money. I will find the money to put the water purification systems so at least these students can drink clean water while they're at school, and they don't have to worry about cancer water, cancer ice. They will be drinking purified water. We're going to balance this budget, and I want to look into this to see if there's mismanagement of funds. Part of fiscal responsibility is also managing waste, fraud, and abuse. I'll give you an example. The book committee. If we've got two individuals in the book committee that are not going to show up to that meeting, maybe they should give some advance notice so that the taxpayer isn't on the hook for fifteen hundred dollars. That's a total of 2.5 million dollars overall for the book committee. Is that money well-spent? Not if the board circumvents the book committee altogether and makes their decisions without input from that book committee. So I do feel that there are many areas where we could be more fiscally responsible, and I intend to do that. Thank you.
When it comes to the budget, the 1.4 billion-dollar budget, one drive that I really want to press forward is the debt. An amazing thing we could do is put more percentage of the money we get on our annual budget and push that towards the debt to slowly climb us out. We can't do it all at once, although I wish we could, but we don't have that kind of money. And a way to do this is we need to focus on the necessities. What do we need in our schools to help our students and staff succeed in their positions? By only focusing on those and cutting out all of the other frivolous overspending, we'll be able to focus on that budget, that debt-managed budget. Additionally, what we could do with that money is give teachers that extra couple of percentages that they really do deserve. One percent is pretty sad. I come from a household of a teacher, so I've seen it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Matt?
Thank you. One of the, I've already given the ways that I would go and cut the budget. Here's where it is. When I was a teacher, I started in 2005. In 2008, they made the decision to freeze our pay. Then they took away the steps. I was part of a group of people that was literally working on my third-year salary while people were coming into the district in 2010, 2011, 2012, and were getting paid three, four thousand dollars more than I was, and they were right next door to me. There's also the fact that when we tried to make those compensations, we just couldn't get there. I was a building rep for Brevard Federation of Teachers. I fought those fights as a teacher. So every time I sit down and we're going to battle for raises, for retention and recruitment and other things, I know the feeling that those teachers have of not having enough money to get to the beach that weekend because you don't have enough gas money to get there. I used to teach seven straight classes. I gave up my planning. Then I used to go coach, and then I taught night school, and I made fifty-two thousand dollars. You want to talk about embarrassing? I gave up my entire life to do that. So when we sit there, and let me correct something, when the district, not the school board, comes out and says that they're going to give a one percent raise, be careful because that's not where we're going to be. This gets quoted a couple of times, and I have to say, that didn't come from us. We did not meet with the district ahead of time. They decided to offer that across the table without our meeting. So understand, I have fought from not only a position of telling people I'm going to fight, but from a position of actually living that life. The other thing besides raises that you have to have is we have to put money towards retention and recruitment because respect is something also the teachers need. We did a lot of that with discipline. We're still cleaning some of that up. But there needs to be a respect level for many of our teachers. They have to be able to walk into that building and understand that that administrator has their back and that the school board has their back. That needs to happen. We're moving in that direction, but it's not there yet. That's another piece. And then the last piece that I would say is the training and support that those new teachers need. There's a recent fact that came out last night that 299 of our teachers, ninety-five percent of them are retained, and that is an amazing program. We need to do more. When they decided to have retention teachers go out and support through working with our new teachers, I advocated for eight teachers. I lost that battle. We only brought four, and we were able to get to 299. If we would have gotten eight, I would have been able to take 600 of them because that's the way we win, is we cut the budget and we put it into those pieces so that our teachers can do a better job. Thank you.
Ava?
Well, if the state is not going to fully fund the school, it's like we're talking in these circles about all these hypothetical things, but if the money is not there, are we doing the best job that we can do in putting the pressure on the state to fully fund our schools? So I'm not sure if that is true or not. And if it's, there's strength in numbers, and if this district and board can fight, why don't we just get with other school districts in Florida? I mean, at the end of it, I mean, it's all over the media, the bottom, pretty much the bottom, outside of what, maybe West Virginia. So clearly, there's something going on in Florida that maybe we all might need to get together and put the pressure where it needs to be. And putting the pressure on, I get it, whether the district or the board, or whether that's not the same entity. I mean, we got to get our communication strategy good, first of all. Because if the district is putting out one percent and that's not what the board believes, that's not true, and they were never contacted, it's kind of strange to me, but who am I? But I mean, the things that we are talking about, we talk about retention and recruitment. The money that's being put into recruitment, well, if you retain the teachers, you don't have to worry about recruitment because they're happy to be here, they're happy to do other things. Hey, come with me because this is a great place to be, but it's not for them. Because if you can't, if you can't pay your rent, you're struggling. I mean, I've talked to a teacher that's been in the game for about fifteen years, and if you're making the same amount as a teacher that's just starting out almost or close, and where do you see the finish line? Like, where do you go? How are you motivated to really stay when you really love the kids, but it's not making dollars and cents at home? How do you do it? And a lot of people, a lot of the teachers are really considering going elsewhere. This is the Space Coast. There's a lot of jobs and opportunities that are here. And for teachers to have to be faced with making those kind of challenges and decisions for their family and leaving the students that they love, this is hard. It's hard decisions that are being made on all different levels. But it's really sad when I talk to teachers, and that's what they tell me. I mean, for me, I've been in the Navy seventeen and a half years. I plan on retiring at twenty. So I see the finish line. I can go on and have another career. But if you put fifteen years of something and you don't have anything, you can't, what do you have to show for it? If you can't even make a living wage.
All right. In one minute or less, please tell the voters why they should cast a vote for you on August 20th. We will start with you, Dr. Taylor.
Well, I bring a unique perspective. I'm a mom. I'm a sailor. I'm a community servant. And I've been blessed to be able to work with people all over the world from different backgrounds in being able to accomplish the mission. And I'm mission-oriented, and that's what I'm going to bring. And I'm mission-oriented, and that's what I'm gonna bring to the table, is always being focused and putting that at the forefront of treating each student with excellence. And so for me, I understand that no school board or our school is perfect, and neither am I. I'm a middle-ground candidate, focused on keeping our kids safe and supporting our teachers, and I wanna move BPS beyond the distractions and stay focused on the things that matter most. So I serve my country honorably, and I plan to serve the students and the teachers in this county honorably.
Mr. Susan?
Thank you. When I look at a problem and they bring it to us, I have firsthand knowledge of how to fix it. When they say that they're gonna bring us a 16% raise for insurance, I know exactly where to go to start to try to battle to reduce that. They've already brought back a 13% raise, and we're pounding away to get it even or increasing in insurance. We're trying to pound to bring it down even further. When you talk about retention and recruitment, I actually went to Escambia County to interview their star program there to figure out how a program from Harvard was able to drive teacher retention into the 80 to 90% back in the day. I tried to bring that to the district, but we didn't have the votes. But there's those knowledge of understanding the how. You can push out the why. You can understand all of those things, but unless you have the how to do it, how to cut the budget, how to cut the insurance, how to go back and get the raises, how to get the retention and recruitment you need, it's a very difficult situation when they tell you and they look at you and they say that that's all we have. Thank you.
Mr. Madel?
When it comes to why voters should vote for me, I would say the explanation is pretty simple. I have been a student in Brevard Public School since kindergarten. That was 13 years ago. I've seen our students. I've seen them post-COVID. I've seen what they're struggling with inside of our schools. Additionally, I come from a household with an educator inside of it. She was raised by an educator as well. So not only have I seen the student side of these issues, I've also seen the educator side. Thank you very much.
Ms. Casey?
The reason that I'm gonna ask for your vote on August 20th is because I feel that I can bring attributes to this position that perhaps you haven't witnessed at the school board meetings of late. I believe I can bring decorum. I can bring negotiation, communication skills with my experience as a flight attendant, working in a very safety-sensitive job. I am a mother of two students, and I've experienced some failures at BPS, and I have some ideas about how we can resolve those failures. Additionally, I do believe that I can be the number-one advocate for our teachers, our staff, and our students, and I would like for Brevard to have another choice come August. If you have an issue, I promise you, you will have my ear. I will listen to you, and I will work to resolve whatever problems that you have. You have my word on that. Thank you.
Okay, before I hand it over to Zach to wrap us up this evening, I would just like to give some thank yous, not only to all of our candidates running for District Four, but we have some amazing timekeepers up here, so I would like to give a shout out to, yes, we'll clap for them. We've got Hope Shibian, who is one of our Brevard Virtual Schools teachers. We have Michelle McCormick, who serves as our political coordinator for BFT and is a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing at Meadow Lane Primary, and her wonderful daughter Sarah that is sitting next to her, and then the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers, Anthony Calucci. So I wanna say thank you to the candidates, thank you to the Space Coast Realtors, to Space Coast Daily for being a partner with us and getting this out into the community for a larger audience to see, and on behalf of the Brevard Federation of Teachers, I wanna say thank you to the audience, because you guys did a fantastic job. You showed that we can maintain decorum in a room without shouting at people on the stage, so I appreciate that. And now to Zach.
Thank you very much to the candidates for coming out here today, and thank you for everybody here in the audience for coming out and being able to engage in it in a conversation and in a way that be able to, education is so important in our community. Being able to be involved is very, very important for everything. Today's live stream was also broadcasted on spacecoastdaily.com, on the Facebook page and also on YouTube, so if you wanna go back and watch it, you can watch it on spacecoastdaily.com. And like we talked about earlier, the 2024 primary election is set for August 20th, and the general election's November 5th, so it's gonna be here before you know it. But we at Space Coast Daily wanna be able to reach out to you guys and let you know that we offer a great platform for political coverage and everything else regarding news and information and space and sports. Once again, thank you much, everybody. This is a great success, and we wanna make sure we also thank the Space Coast Association of Realtors for providing a great facility here and the great hospitality that they provided to us here today. And we thank you for everybody for coming out here today, and have a great night and drive safe.
Thank you.
Anthony. When was that special, babe? It was so long. Thank you so much. That's been so nice to meet you. So glad to be here. Thank you. It's nice meeting you. Thank you. Thank you. It's so nice to meet 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 you. Thank you.